Hello, everyone. Welcome to Dean's Chat where we discuss all things podiatric medicine. My name is Dr. Jeffrey Jensen. I'm the dean at the Arizona College of Podiatric Medicine and the host for the Dean's Chat podcast. Once again, I'm with my co-host, Dr. Joanna Ritchie. Hi, Joe.
Hey, Jeff. How you doing?
I'm doing wonderful. It's great to be back in the studio and back in Phoenix.
Yeah, good stuff.
Feel like I'm taking your place here today.
No, it's okay. A little break from the headphones.
Okay, right on. Very good. Well, we have a wonderful guest today, a local from Arizona, Dr. Lauren Worster. She works locally at the Evergreen Care Center in Glendale, Arizona. Welcome to Dean's Chat, Dr. Worster.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited to be here and on the podcast today. You've had so many wonderful guests, so I feel honored to be asked.
We're honored that you're with us, so thank you. Dr. Worster, we're fairly informal here on Dean's Chat, and if it's okay with you, let's go with first names, Lauren, Joe, and Jeff.
Perfect.
All right, let me give you a little more of a formal introduction. So, excuse me, Lauren went to school at the Des Moines University College of Podiatric Medicine and Surgery. You can see her banner behind her right shoulder there. She did her three-year surgical residency program at St. Mary's Medical Center in San Francisco. She's been extremely active with the American Podiatric Medical Association and giving back to the profession. Lauren, it was wonderful to have you representing APMA this past spring at the Arizona College of Podiatric Medicine. Thank you very much. Welcome to Dean's Chat.
Thank you.
So, I'd love to just kick it off, Joe, and ask Lauren, when I looked at your CV, I saw all the new things. You are representing the American Podiatric Medical Association. You're on the Board of Trustees as a young physician. You made a quick journey up that path. I want to congratulate you. Could you tell us a little bit about that journey? Because that's above and beyond what we see in most docs that are so fresh out of residency program.
Yeah, you know, I think I just was very lucky in terms of just the right opportunities came at the right time. Going through University of Illinois in Champaign, I was always very active, a lot of volunteering, a lot of different leadership opportunities, and then kind of continuing that path at DMU. And so after I finished my chief resident year at St. Mary's, I was like, okay, now what? I've been doing all these different things and trying to figure out how can I still get involved in the profession now that I'm kind of away from that educational standpoint and still have that connection. So I actually, after I finished residency, I moved to Arizona and I was trying to kind of figure out how do I get involved in Arizona? Because I didn't go to school here. I didn't go to residency here. So just trying to figure out the landscape of healthcare and podiatry specifically in Arizona. And so I reached out to AZ Fama and got involved and they helped me kind of find my way there. And then I went to the APMA Young Physician Institute, YPI. That program is no longer in play, but we'll talk about what's replaced it, I'm sure, later. And that was in Nashville. And so from there, I was able to make great connections with some of the leaders at APMA. Applied for a committee. I was on the Communications Committee for two years. And then I was on the Podiatric Population Health Committee for APMA for a year. And then from there, just the way that the timeframe in terms of positioning, opening up, the young physician position on the Board of Trustees was available in March. And I said, okay, you know what? I think it's a good time. I really want to give back to the profession. I really want to help other young physicians that maybe feel like, you know, I'm not really sure where I fit in in podiatry. And I want to be that helping hand and help kind of lift them up and get them to where they want and what they want out of their careers and kind of like get them in that pathway. So I was like, okay, this is the position that can allow for me to do that. And so, you know, there was the going through the House of Delegates and meeting people from all over the country. And it was just a really fantastic experience. And now I was fortunate enough to be voted onto the board and here I am.
I was at the House of Delegates when you were up on the panel and they were just kind of firing questions at you. And I thought you did a phenomenal job answering them. And obviously, when the vote came in, you won and you're a member of the APMA Board of Trustees. So congratulations. Joe, your thoughts about so much activity early in your career?
Yeah, Lauren, I'm so excited to have you here. We met briefly in a workshop, I think here on campus, the first time. And your energy and charisma are infectious and I love that. So I'm not surprised at all that you have shared that message with the APMA and continue to be such a presence in our profession. So I have a little question for you. That experience that Dr. Jensen was just talking about, can you elaborate a little bit on that? So if somebody wants to get involved and they do some committee work, what does that panel review process, what does that kind of look like? What kind of questions did they ask? How did you prepare for that? Floor is yours.
Sure. So really, as a young physician member on the board, my goal is, and my purpose essentially, is to give young physicians a voice. You know, we have people of many different experience levels, career paths on the board, but there wasn't a specific young physician position. And, you know, obviously, as organizations continue to grow and want to continue to thrive, they need to have the younger population involved. You know, that's how we just continue to move forward. And so that's my sole purpose is to be like, okay, you know what? I'm hearing from young physicians, whether it's the Young Physician Leadership Panel, which there's 13 young physicians throughout the country that's on it. So I chaired that committee. And then young physicians are on various APMA committees, so they can give their young physician feedback and perspective and say, you know what? We're noticing this. I'm running into this issue. You know, we're not necessarily learning how to do the billing and coding here. Maybe this might be an effective resource. And, you know, that's just the coding committee or communications committee. Hey, you know what? Social media podcasts, that those are such an important way to connect, not only just with current young physicians, but also students, residents, and prospective students. You know, as you know, from Feet on the Street and Explore Pod Med, so many people are going to those social media resources for information. And so that's the goal of the young physicians, to kind of keep that energy and that perspective in place. And so I'm fortunate that I get to be involved in that and then be surrounded by so many wonderful young physicians from across the country that have just a fantastic energy, want to give back to their profession. In terms of like the actual House of Delegates process, I actually started it back in January and the House of Delegates is in March. And so I basically put together a letter that I submitted out to all of the state components saying, hey, this is who I am. You know, not everyone knows, you know, that I'm not on a first-name basis, you know, household name or anything like that. So just wanted to kind of introduce who I was and why I was running for that position. And then from there, I set up Zoom meetings or phone calls with the individual like Massachusetts and California. They gave me the time and asked questions and, you know, showed why I would be a good person to have on the board. And so that was that process. And then we got to the actual House of Delegates. And again, it's going to the major caucuses. That's what they're called, the House of Delegates. The state components have like, you know, the Michigan Caucus or the Ohio Caucus, Florida. And you go in, you get grilled for, you know, 10, 15 plus minutes on why, you know, what thoughts you have, what plans you have, what you want to accomplish as a board member. And then from there, they deliberate and decide who they'd like to cast their vote for. And then there was the panel like Dr. Jensen mentioned, in terms of, you know, specific young physician questions. How do you get more young physicians involved? How does APMA continue to expand and have more of the young physician membership in the actual organization? And so that was, I think that was probably the most nerve-wracking aspect of it because you're up on a stage, you got a microphone, and then, you know, you anticipate what questions they're going to ask, but you don't actually know. And you hope you have the right answer because you can do all this prep work, you know, think about and have the right ideals and why you want to get involved. But it only takes one question to stump you up. So that was, now it's probably the hardest part for me.
Well, I thought it was interesting, Lauren, because you were calm, cool, and collected. Because, Joe, when they ask questions on the panel, it's not like they ask one question and each panelist gets to answer it. They ask one question to one panelist and a new question to the next. And so you really didn't know what was coming at you, Lauren. And I thought you did a fabulous job. May I, you know, with Joe and I being at the college, of course, we're interfacing with the students every day. And it certainly is a young leadership physician panel is great. Also, there's the Emerging Leaders Program. I know you're on that chair of that committee also. So what message do you bring to the students and the residents and the young practitioners? What is APMA's message to them going forward? And what exactly are you trying to do with the panel?
Sure. So there's the Young Physician Leadership Panel, and then there's the Emerging Leaders Program, which is basically like a leadership development program, teaching skills that are important for future leaders to kind of help them accelerate their journey, not only through APMA, but either at the state level, through their hospital system, through their, you know, if they're in a group practice, just basically skills that are transferable to any aspect of practice. And so this is the second time that we're doing this. And it's basically the replacement of the Young Physician Institute, just kind of rebranded a little bit of a different direction. And then, you know, we have a different name for that. So we're actually very excited because our in-person events actually happen October 3rd and 4th in Chicago. And so there will be the Young Physician Leadership Panel there as well as the participants in the ELP. So that type of program and APMA's backing of it really shows that APMA wants to not only have young physician voices, but actually develop the leaders for tomorrow. You know, similar to me, I'm not, you know, didn't necessarily, you know, come out and have like, oh, everyone knows me because of research or whatnot. There's, you know, people who do that and it's very impressive, but it was kind of just making those connections, developing those connections and putting in the effort to get to this point. And so the ELP is kind of a way for people who don't necessarily have that direct path to leadership, for them to kind of make their way in. So I'd say if there was a message from APMA to the young physicians, residents, students, it's that, one, we want to hear your voice and that your voice matters. And, two, you know, just keep plugging, just keep pushing through. Someone wants you to be part of their program. And whether it's the state level, the individual components, or like county societies, or at the APMA national level, there is a place for you and what you have to say is important. And so we, you know, doesn't matter what residency, fellowship, school you go to, everyone's voice is important. Everyone's voice is what's going to help continue to carry the profession forward.
That's great. And I commend you for chairing those panels because that's a lot of work, no doubt. You're also a task force member for the One Board Initiative. How's that going?
So far, we've had one meeting. And so it was, I would say, like a good entry-level meeting in terms of, you know, here's kind of the ground rules. Here's the elements of the task force that we're trying, or the goal of the task force we're trying to accomplish. And then here's some kind of like research we should do moving forward. So I'd say it's still like in the early levels and then there's no background work doing more so from the different, you know, I'm not, I'm a member of it. I'm not the chair of it. So the chair is working with other people in terms of how do we move forward and kind of what the end result may be. So I'd say that it's still very much in the early stages and not, not not much else to report at this point in time, but hopefully more to come soon.
I have this image of looking at your calendar and every night you're busy with meetings.
Sometimes I try to stack them together. So like tomorrow, I have two meetings simultaneously, you know, one right after another. But, you know, actually, it's funny that you mention that because I was actually meeting with a prospective student today after clinic. And she was asking me about like work-life balance in podiatry. And I was saying, you know, it's really what you make of it. You know, if you want to have your nine-to-five, you know, job and then go home and do the different things, you work to live, not live to work, absolutely, you can do that with podiatry. And if you want to, you know, do research or teach at the school, do podcasts or other entrepreneurial activities, you absolutely can do that, too. And I think that's so wonderful about podiatry, especially if you look at the previous people who have been on this podcast. You know, they have such diverse backgrounds and so many different things and facets that they go within podiatry. And our profession really allows for that, whatever interests you may have. There's a way to kind of incorporate podiatry into it, or podiatry can help you kind of accelerate in that. And so it was kind of funny that I had that meeting today and that I was on the podcast today because of the timing of it. But, you know, you do what you enjoy. You spend time, you know, doing the things that make you happy and being able to be involved and help kind of promote others. That's what I like to do and that's what gives me joy. And, you know, I get to meet wonderful people like you guys all the time. So it works well for me.
Joe, that's the message we give our prospective students all the time.
Absolutely. Options. Just, it's a nice professional experience that gives you lots of different options. And the longer I'm in this and the more people we've talked to, Jeff, the more I'm also convinced there are personality types that lend themselves to, like they get drawn to the busy part of the industry, right? And then there are people that genuinely have no interest in diving in there and there's nothing wrong with that, right? They have interests outside the profession and they want to pursue them. And to Lauren's point, fantastic. Go and pursue those and continue to have a profession full of interesting people. And it's just such a neat experience to have all of that as an option.
I have a question for you. Go ahead.
Oh, sure. I was just going to say even, because I hope out at the lower limb lab at AC Pod in the summer. This is my third year doing it. And so I love, one, I love teaching. One day, I think I want to kind of go into that route. But it's fantastic to hear so many of their different experiences. You know, I went straight from, you know, college med school residency practice. But there's people that take a year or two gap in between, or they had another profession, or they did collegiate sports. And it's so fascinating, the diversity of just even within the, you know, your school that you had. And so I think, you know, that's really a testament to podiatry in terms of, you know, where people came from, how they come to this collective profession, and then how they take those experiences and kind of go out from there.
I agree. So I have a question for you. You went to undergrad in Illinois and then you migrated a little bit west and you went to Des Moines for school. How'd you find out about podiatry when you were an undergrad? Or did you know about it before then?
So that, yeah, good question. So went to U of I and then I was home for a summer. And I was like, what is this thing on my foot? And I had a wart on my little toe of all things. Okay. Now, no, you know, people have like sports med injuries. They broke their ankle, had their bunion fixed. No, I just had a wart. It's not nothing impressive whatsoever. And so I went to the podiatrist in my hometown, Plainfield, Illinois, and she was like the coolest person ever. And she just, she was a few years graduated from residency. She had a family. She still interacted with her residency program. And she's like, look, this is great. I'm taking care of your wart right here. I got a guy next door with an ankle fracture. I have a kid with a flat foot across the hall. I can do all of these different things and still do the things I want outside of life. And so she was just like so friendly, so kind, so caring. And I just had the one visit with her and I was like, you know what? This sounds pretty good. So when I got back to U of I, I shadowed at the Christie Clinic, which is right out, not too far away from U of I. And there were four different podiatrists there. And so I'd go to my classes from eight to noon and then I'd be there in the clinic from, you know, one to five, take the bus there and learn and kind of see what they did. And so that's how I got involved in podiatry.
That's classic. Yeah, being a patient and thinking, wow, this is cool. I didn't even know there were podiatrists that treat just the foot and ankle, right? Kind of a, it's an eye-opening experience for so many students.
I also, I competitively danced from eight to 18. And when I was in my final years of high school, one of my best friends, she also did cheerleading on top of dance. And she, you know, saw off the pyramid and then she had some other things and she was out for like a whole year. And I was like, this is, she is too good of a dancer to have to be out of commission for an entire year. Like this is, this is supposed to be her prime time, being active and all of these things. And so I hated seeing my friend like that. And so being able to learn what the pathology that led to her being out and then being able to help, you know, people who have similar injuries, you know, be able to hopefully have a faster recovery period, or at least, you know, get a more timely diagnosis. And that way, she didn't necessarily need to be out as long as possible, but they thought it was just an ankle sprain and actually was much more. She had an ankle fracture in with it. And so that was the other aspect to how I got into podiatry.
Fantastic. And then I'm sure, as I mentioned earlier, yes, your Des Moines banner, Dr. Yoho would be proud. Dr. Kevin Smith, he's always in purple. You know, all the Des Moines folks are in purple. Gotta love it.
Purple's my favorite color.
There you go. Why did you choose the Des Moines University College of Podiatric Medicine and Surgery?
So being from the Chicago suburbs, I get this all the time. Why didn't you go to Shoal? And it had nothing to do with the school, except I couldn't live in my hometown and still go to school. It'd be like a flower commute each day. So I said, okay, you know what? Let's try something different. And, you know, hey, I'll go west to Iowa. And so, you know, it's people, it's not an exotic place, but people really underestimate Iowa. The people are fantastic. The, you know, cost of living is fantastic. But I just, I can't speak enough of my DMU experience. I'm still in touch with so many of my classmates. They have been my biggest support system and cheerleaders throughout this whole time. Like, you know, I just saw a few of them at the national conference, APMS Conference, you know, a few weeks ago. And it's like, oh, yeah, how, you know, how are your kids doing? You know, where are you practicing now? And it's just so great, the experience I got to have. So I'm so fortunate for DMU. But my sister went to Drake University, which is right across the street, essentially, or high, across the highway from where DMU's campus used to be. And so it worked out well. It's just a one-stop thing for my parents to, you know, go from Chicago, come to Des Moines, see us both. And I got to be close to her for those three years that I was at DMU. So that was another pretty big motivating factor to go to DMU.
Very good. So, Joe, one of those common themes, right? Small, small field. You go to a meeting, you see all your buddies that you went to school with or you did a residency with. I think that's one of the allures of a smaller profession also.
Also, definitely one of the big drives, when we went virtual for a while, and I know now we're in this hybrid, but I feel like in the virtual setting, you don't, you miss that. You don't get to run into, oh, my goodness, I haven't seen you in five years. Or those opportunities to connect with one another goes away when we go virtual. And so while there's definitely a lot of pros there as well, at this level of my career, that's my favorite part of conferences, is running into people and connecting with people and catching up and learning something new. It's like all of those things combined is a wonderful opportunity.
So Lauren, you and Joe have something in familiar that you both did residencies in California, heading further west. What was it like at St. Mary's? Did you live in San Francisco proper? Or how did that work for you?
So prior to finishing school in Iowa, I really hadn't been further, further west than Des Moines. You know, just a few for rotations, but I really hadn't been, you know, spent any significant time. So when I first got to San Francisco, it was such a culture shock to me. I found my, the room I rented off of Craigslist, which of course is a huge no-no. Yeah. And so, you know, it could have gone two very different ways. Luckily, I had a fantastic landlord and the, it was a Jack and Jill bedroom bathroom. And so the guy on the other side, he wasn't, he wasn't too out there. So that's how I got to San Francisco. And it was a really huge culture shock, a really interesting, exciting experience. I think the, you know, when you're in residency, it's kind of one of those things, it's the best of times, it's the worst of times. And once you leave, you don't realize, until you actually leave, how wonderful and unique of an experience it was. And I'm so fortunate for all of the attendings that I got to work with and rotate, you know, with my program. You know, I got to see the sports medicine side with Dr. Olaf. I was at Highland County Hospital, which is a Level One Trauma Center in Oakland. And you see really one-of-the-kind injuries that happened there. I get to work with, you know, Dr. Traynor and Dr. Kim, who were wonderful individuals. And then my third year, I got to rotate through with some of the Kaiser locations. And I loved those, getting to work with Dr. Coleman and Dr. Schubert and Dr. Patel is just, I'm so fortunate for the experience that I got to have. And it was really wonderful. So it probably wouldn't have been, you know, if anyone had said, Lauren's going to San Francisco, they'd be like, what? She's leaving the Midwest? It makes no sense. But I think it was a fantastic opportunity and I was so lucky to get to be there.
Sounds like you trained with people that provided a wealth of knowledge. Dr. Olaf, I went to the California College and he taught at CCPM when I was there, too. So he's brilliant and he's so involved in the sports medicine aspect. What a great opportunity.
It was. And there's just so much diversity there. And so it's a very well-rounded program. And again, like I said, you don't realize how truly fortunate and lucky we were to get to be part of these different residency programs across the country. And so you actually get into practice and you're like, whoa, yeah, I remember this thing because of this one patient at that one location. And I know that I should try this because of that. And I think, you know, taking it all in, good, bad, or ugly, you know, take it all in because it's all going to help mold and shape you and help you in your career.
Absolutely. To come full circle, then, how did you land in Phoenix?
Similar to how I ended up in DMU, my family, my parents decided my third year residency, they say, hey, Lauren, come home, Chicago. You have a day to pack up your room. We're moving to Phoenix. I'm like, Phoenix? You guys haven't even been there. What's going on? And, yeah. And so I came home, packed up my stuff, and then they sold the house like a month later and have been in Scottsdale ever since. So once I finished residency, I said, okay, go, go see them, go enjoy them, you know, and be close to everyone.
Makes perfect sense. Joe, your thoughts?
I'm curious. So the, I'm not as familiar with the Chicagoland area. Was that, were you living close to the city, in the city for the undergrad?
About 45 minutes. Oh, so I lived, like my hometown was 45 minutes outside of Chicago. Undergrad was about two and a half, three hours south. So it's more like central Illinois.
Okay. So, because again, when, it's funny because when people say culture shock about San Francisco area, there's a lot of ways I can go. And I fully agree because having lived there, it's an amazing, amazing place. But there are some fun little quirks to it. So culture shock then from going from Chicagoland to DMU, I could understand. Just cost of living, kind of different pace, and then almost trading up for the exact opposite, going to the West Coast. What was the transition from there to Phoenix like?
I think, I think Phoenix has changed a lot and maybe, and hopefully you guys agree, I think that Phoenix has changed tremendously in the past four or five years. So I think COVID was a big part of that. I actually don't think there was much of a culture shock in terms of coming from the suburbs of Chicago to Des Moines, Iowa, and San Francisco, because they are so different. So Arizona was kind of a middle man, you know, in terms of, you have a lot of snowbirds, a lot of Chicago Midwest transplants here. And then you also have, you know, a good subset of people from Washington, Oregon, and San, not San Francisco, but California. And so I think it was kind of a good middle ground. The culture, or the shock was when I left San Francisco. I had sold my car, so I packed up the rental car with everything I had at like 7:30 in the morning. It's 45 degrees on July 1st in San Francisco. I drive the 12, 14 hours here. I get here at like 9:00 PM, I'm at the Phoenix Airport to drop off this rental car. I step out and it's like 99 degrees at 9:00 PM. I said, what did I get myself into? And like most people, their first year, I'm like, what the heck? It is so hot. Why is it so hot? It's an oven. But then you're like, you know, a year or two in and you're like, oh, it's only 90 degrees out. This is nice. Let's like, let's go for a walk. And it's, that's the shock in coming to Phoenix, not necessarily the culture. I think that Phoenix is a great kind of melting pot of a lot of different areas of the country. I think that, uh, Phoenix is a great kind of melting pot of a lot of different areas of the country. And so I think it's more the heat shock.
Like one of those cool things about San Francisco, I would, I'm paraphrasing Mark Twain. Didn't he say the, the coldest winter of his life was a summer in San Francisco?
Yep. Summer hits late. It's like October is the best, best time in San Francisco.
Right? Absolutely. I'll never forget as, uh, as winter came around, the, the fog would come in from the ocean. It would come over sunset, it would come over the Western addition and it would just envelope everything.
It's like a blanket.
Yeah, absolutely. I just like that. Exactly. Um, so Lauren, my wife and I spent four years right near CCPM down, uh, up to Visadero and, and Ellis there. And, uh, for a great year, San Francisco was just such a beautiful place. And, uh, on top of that, it was just four great years of going to school. So I always have warm fuzzies when we talk about San Francisco.
Sure. Yeah, I lived, um, uh, it was Stone, Stone Town, Stonetown Mall, which is, um, like Ocean Avenue and it's kind of like on the cusp of Daly City and San Francisco. So it worked out well for convenience in terms of traveling to different locations, but still was in San Francisco. Not, definitely not like in the downtown part of the city, but just on those, those, um, like outskirts, which worked perfectly for me. So I could see that fog kind of coming in and then, and then go about my day.
Well, that's awesome. We, we were in the mission and then we lived in Soma for a while. And so when we lived in Soma especially, you could see it, I used to make the joke, it's a big fuzzy cat who's like climbing over Sutu Tower. Cause it was just, just like, watch it roll in. And it was beautiful, but that's when you take a scarf and a sweater because you don't know what to expect.
It's so true.
Can I, can I transition real quick?
Yes, please.
And I looked at the time and I could sit here and talk about San Francisco for literally like an entire day because I loved San Francisco. But I am also, all the leadership stuff that you have been involved with Laura, I would love to get your experience with the, uh, American College of Foot and Ninkle Surgeons, Chris Mahaffey Leadership Program, because I know you were a participant. Was that the first rollout that they did that you were a part of?
Sure. Yeah. So last year was the first, um, cohort of the Chris Mahaffey Leadership Development Program. And it was a phenomenal program. Um, I'm not sure if anyone, if you guys are aware, but actually won an award, like a, like a Leadership Development Course Award for in terms of how, how well it was put together in terms of, you know, so many different people were involved. You know, the staff that was involved had everything, you know, curated so, so well. Um, you know, the DPMs that were involved in terms of developing, you know, hey, this is a project that we want to do. This is how we're going to do it. Um, it, they, they left no stone unturned. It was really fantastic. And then there's also this mentorship component to it. And in a funny twist of events, I actually got paired with Dr. Schubert, who was one of the attendings I got to work with when I was in San Francisco. So that was really cool. And I was very, I was very happy and very lucky that they, um, that they, they put us back in contact because obviously Dr. Schubert's a one of a kind individual. And so getting to work with him again was, was wonderful. And I appreciated his helping and guidance, but they had so many different people involved in the program and they really made it. So it was how can we help develop these, these different people who have leadership aspirations? And we had everyone from people who had just recently graduated from residency, working in private practice, rural practice, fellowship directors. And so it was a really fascinating cohort of people and just wonderful individuals that you want to surround yourself with. And so I, I, it was a great experience, you know, um, and I'm fortunate that Acus put that together.
What did that look like in terms of the structure? Did you guys meet once a month, once a quarter? How did?
Sure. It was, um, a pretty structured program in terms of like, there was pre-session work to do. And then there was, you should meet with your mentor, you know, somewhere between the pre-work and your actual session, kind of discuss, discuss those different topics. Um, and then we had, uh, I believe it was a two hour session or maybe an hour and a half session, um, uh, once a month. And then we kind of went through everything. We did, you know, little breakout sessions in terms of actually putting these, um, principles into practice. And then one, getting to network and interact with different parts or different people in the program. Um, and then we kind of came back together as a, as a group, discussed different things, um, in relation to the topic. And we did that each month. Um, in addition to that, there was a capstone project. And so there were four groups and each group had a different topic. Um, and then we presented those at, um, the, uh, AC FAS Annual Scientific Conference in Tampa, um, in, uh, January, February.
Fantastic. And that's a neat way to network with each other. So those, those meetings with the, the little bit of prep work ahead of time, were those just the participants in the cohort or was that also the mentors and the mentees together?
The meetings were just the mentees and then the, um, the AC FAS, um, program leads that were, that were part of it. So Dr. Sensasti, she was, she was at every call. And then there was always a board of, uh, directors member on each call to kind of give some feedback and, and, uh, talk a little bit about the capstone project. So it was a very well-run program. It was really interesting to hear the, you know, the background of not only podiatry, but AC FAS, because that's part, part one of the Leadership Development Program. And then part two is, is what we were previously talking about with the, the cohort and the, the different sessions.
Fantastic. Thank you for sharing that.
That must've been a neat opportunity to pair with Dr. Schubert because we've had him on the show twice. And, um, I think we could do like ten episodes and we'd never run out of things to talk about.
Absolutely. And it's, you know, you have him as an, an attending, you know, in, in your resident. So there's one level of, uh, you know, interaction there. And so now kind of being a few years out, and now that he's retired, you kind of get to, you have different questions to ask and get different, um, perspectives and experiences that, that he shared. And so I, I, I really liked it a lot. It was great.
That's fantastic. Uh, you know, uh, Lauren, you are the sixth Board of Trustee Members of APMA that we've interviewed. And yeah, when Joe and I were interviewing Brooke Bisbee and Scott Hughes last year, one of the things that, uh, I was kind of surprised about was how many committees, um, you're involved in at any given time. And like currently you're on the Education Committee, the Development Committee, the Leadership, Young Leadership. What's your favorite committee? What, what do you, what do you make, what do you think makes the most difference?
Oh, that's, that's such a hard question. Um, so with the Education Committee, we're actually having, um, a, a meeting next week. So I'm really looking forward to that one because it's right after the, the national conference. And so in terms of discussing, you know, future, future programming and future conferences, I'm pretty, pretty excited for that. Um, I love the Student Engagement Committee. As you guys know, interacting with students is always so much fun. Um, and they have wonderful perspectives to share. Um, it's kind of humbling though, uh, because technically I'm a young physician, right? I'm, I'm not even, you know, 10 years from graduation, but they definitely make me feel a little older. So it's kind of a humbling experience getting to interact with them. Um, and but just love their perspectives because obviously what they, they have to share is, is kind of how we need to move forward to continue to kind of push the, push the profession forward. Um, the Legislative Committee is also very fascinating. Not really into like politics or anything like that, but to learn about the process of how laws get into place is a fascinating thing in terms of all the background work that goes into it. Um, Ben Wallner does a fantastic job and the rest of the APMA staff to really kind of get these different things on, on the radar. Um, you know, in, in terms of making it not only for podiatry, but also, you know, all of healthcare. We're all working together on those different bills. Um, and I think just the different things that pop up, you know, there's, you know, things about Indian Health Services and, you know, students, student loan repayments and Medicare. And there's just so many different things that we don't necessarily learn in school. And you're like, wait, all of this is part of the Legislative Committee? And so it's really fascinating to learn how much of what we do comes from that committee, because that's not what people think about. You know, the people always think about the Surgery Foundation, the Medicine Foundation, but we get to do those things and have the results that we have partially because of this Legislative Committee and the different, you know, legislative bills that come from it. So I, I could not pick one committee. They're all so different, so unique and so important to podiatry.
Ben Wallner's great to work with. No doubt. Really truly a leader in that legislative advocacy front. Um, go ahead.
He's been doing it for twenty-five years. It's, it's, it's incredible. With like just podiatry. So to be focused and committed to our profession for that long of a time and not be a DPM, I think that's pretty impressive.
I'd love it. Absolutely. Joanie, last thoughts?
No, thank you so much, Lauren, for coming in and talking with us. If people do want to reach out to you, what's the best way that, for them to find you?
Absolutely. Um, so I have, um, my doctor.lauran.worster Instagram account. And then from an email standpoint, L. Worster, W U R S T E R at apma.org. You know, always happy to hear thoughts, want to get involved, want to, you know, have an idea, you know, please share it. I will be your biggest champion to kind of help get it through.
That's fabulous. Lauren, thank you so much for taking on the leadership roles within our profession and kind of being a guiding light for the young physicians in terms of leadership and how they can make a difference in our profession going forward. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having me on, guys. And thank you for all the work that you guys do.
Oh, thank you. And Lauren, we're going to send you a Dean's Chat cup too. Uh, so be expecting that in the mail, um, for your beverage of choice. But there you go.
I'll have to put it on one of my shows.
Oh, now we're talking. I like that. That's a great idea. All right, Lauren, thanks a lot. And to all of our listeners out there, if you're listening on Spotify or Apple Podcasts, uh, we really appreciate you listening. And if you can leave some comments, uh, about the show, we'd appreciate that. And if you're watching on YouTube, by all means become a subscriber. And until next week, cheers, everybody.